Called meeting to order, please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, welcome to a Wednesday afternoon meeting. You can see Cynthia Mickelson is out of town and Nan may be joining us late, we're not sure what her commitment was for sure, I did not, if you want to, you can, thank you. So she will walk in here shortly, so we will get started. We have nobody wishing to address the board today, okay? So can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the May 5th meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that passes. Minutes are approved, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, the agenda is approved, no new conflicts of interest. Motion to approve the consent agenda, items seven A through D.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, and that passes. All right, we'll start with the reports of the president. We're gonna start today with a public hearing with the fiscal year 22 proposed budget and tentative adoption of said budget, so thank you.
Vice President Carley and members of the board, Rich Kloon, VP Finance and Operations. This, as you indicated, is the public hearing for a tentative adoption. Earlier today, Bob and I were having a discussion trying to find that analogy as how to best describe the budget process this year. And I think we ended it on, it's like watching an NBA game. So the first forty-seven minutes, kind of back and forth, not a lot happening, gets real exciting in the last minute. So we're kind of at the real exciting point of this budget adoption. I'll probably primarily stick to the PowerPoint and little bit different presentation than what we have done in the past. I know there are a lot of numbers and I think George W. Bush, when he was the president, said, well, clearly it's a budget, it's got a lot of numbers in it. So that's what you're gonna see here, but what this flows from is the public notice document. It also mirrors the way that we report on the annual financial report too. So it groups things by clusters, pulls things together by academic programs and then by supporting services. And this walks us through that in terms of this tentative adoption. I think the big piece on this first page is that red number kind of towards the bottom and down at the middle. As this tentative is being proposed, it's calling for a use of existing cash of $1,530,000. I can assure you, the final adoption will not reflect that. We've still got some work to do and that's the last minute type of things that we are currently working on. When we adopted the budget goals here several months ago, one of the, one of the stated goals was to bring in a balanced budget. So our revenues aligning with our expenditures, that's fully our intent of where we plan to get with the final adoption in July. But I did wanna walk you through some of the things that are within this as they currently exist, why we're seeing that differential right now and what we're gonna try to do to close that gap. And I think backing up a couple of years, one of the things that, as you go to adopt a budget, it's always a snapshot in time. You're looking at the upcoming year in FY22, but you really have to look at your financial position overall. And so to that end, a couple of things with this, when we concluded FY20, if you recall, which I barely recall, so we had planned in that budget to have an expenditure or a use of cash of $885,000. And there were some one-time things tied to that, it had the change in the early retirement payoffs as a lump sum. There were some other types of things that were going on, street additions related to Jefferson High. I think were kind of the two major components that caused us to dip into cash. Well, timing of projects, since the construction is primarily over the summer term and it crosses our fiscal years, rather than an $885,000 use of cash, we wound up with a surplus of 1.53 million. That comes from those projects not being completed, so when we adopted the FY21 budget, we rolled those dollars into 21, reprogrammed the completion of the construction projects, and that's why you see a use of cash in 2021 of $2.1 million roughly. That's not 800,000 use of cash in 20 and a 2.1 million use of cash in 21. So we ended up favorably, like I said, it was 885 and we actually ended up favorably at 1.5 million. So 2.3 million, but the planned use of cash this year is calling for, in the budget that was adopted, and you see that down on the bottom next to the red number, the 2,072, so actually we're a little bit ahead. So the point I'm making is that our financial position going into 21 was better than what we anticipated it to be. As we look to close out FY21 now, if we look at the, if you look at the April report that was on the consent agenda, you can see that planned use, we're about a million dollars expenditures in excess of revenues. We've got some major revenues still coming in for the rest of the year, the construction projects are largely complete. We're just waiting for the charge-off for the Terry Avenue extension, but we're well within that. So the second point, who am I coming in better at the end of 20? I think we're gonna come in better at the end of 21 as well. So you will see, rather than us using cash of $2 million, if I'm anticipating it'll come in less. That means, again, we're in a little better position than where we anticipated we were going to be. How that relates to the FY22 budget comes into this, and as we develop it and you call for that 1.5 million use of cash, it would be easy to say, well, we came in better than we anticipated, we've got some room. That's not the intent, the intent is to bring that down to zero. But what it does do, as we go to budget and you create that initial differential, is you tend to take a conservative approach to your budgeting requirements. So a perfect example that I use is when I develop our legal fees budget, you tend to look backwards and project what you're gonna do, but legal fees is one of those things, you have no idea what's gonna transpire. So FY21 had $50,000 in it, so as I'm building a conservative budget, we're on pace to go right at that 50. We should be pretty close to ending there. So I take a conservative approach and look at it and say, let's bump that up. No idea what's gonna happen, no crystal ball, so a conservative approach to the budget is to say, I'm gonna put it at 60. Well, as we go to reconcile and balance this budget and bring it down, that's an item I could pull back to 50. It's rare that we over expend 50, I'm comfortable in doing that, knowing that we ended up in 20 better and we ended up 20, or in planning to end up 21 better than what we did. So that gives us that cushion that isn't always reflected in that budget document. So you try to narrow that request in FY22 down to something that is really spot on. And I think historically in all the years I've done this, I don't know that we've ever gone over our expenditure appropriation without something planned or that you knew about. So we tend to historically budget more conservative. So that's part of trying to bring that 1.5 million down a little bit. So when you, when you look at the major categories as you lay them across and look left to right on the page, you can see it, it is fairly across the board in a lot of these areas. The big reduction is in the capital improvements, obviously we're going from a $2 million projects and completing the things to something a little bit less. So we're going to just program at this point based on what our dedicated revenue sources are to capital improvements. Feel free to stop and ask questions as we go through. So I flip over into the next page, this is just a little bit of a different look and breaks it down by programs that fit under the instructions. So you see in aggregate various changes, and one of the things that I wanna point out on this page that's relevant is you, as you look at the right-hand column here in the percentage changes. So you see the agricultural food and natural resources, which is our horde, landscape, turf management, VETTEC. You see that increase in cost going up, but there's an associated enrollment increase planned with that. So one of the staff additions we're asking is for that additional VETTEC instructor for the second year of the program. But there's also, we now start to realize the first year and second year students. And I don't wanna say there's a perfect match, as you see expenditures going up, that there's a corresponding match to enrollments, architecture and construction, that's construction management, architectural components, and drawn a blank, electrician, plumbing, HVAC. That's a 22.76% increase over this current year budget. The enrollment growth is projected to be pretty, pretty flat. So when going and look for adjustments, we really need to go in and look at those aggregate of those programs and say, is this that ultra-conservative approach as it's submitted, or is there some things we can scale back? Number one, looking at what we're pacing right now and any things that we feel might be trending. So these programs have some increased costs, I think we're aware of, construction costs, copper costs, all of those types of commodity costs going up. So we're seeing some of those kind of components being reflected in these requests. Health science, a pretty healthy increase there, 16.24%, but you also see a corresponding projected increase in enrollment of 16%. Information technology is one that we really need to look at pretty hard, that's our programming and our networking programs. You've seen an 18.86% increase, but yet we're seeing some declining enrollments there. So we'll take a hard look at that area too as we, as we go to move forward. Program wrap, it's a relatively small component, that's the gen ed, not much growth in there or much of requests, but we're seeing some decline in that program in enrollment, that's a very small component. It's really related to our dual and concurrent, and I think that's reflective as I do my modeling, I look at last year. So when you look at what's happening with the pandemic, you see smaller numbers in those concurrent dual credits. We'll see those pick up this year, so I think we'll actually wind up better. This gives a more detailed breakout as you look at the various major categories, and again, we're just focusing on instructional areas. But it breaks out by our major components of wages, benefits, purchase services, supplies, materials, capital dues and fees. And as you look towards the bottom, I think it gives you a better, on the, on the final three rows, you can see the FY21 adopted, the FY22 tentative, and the percentage increase in those various major categories. So when you look at wages, that's really related to the new instructional positions that we have. Benefits is the ancillary that tags from new positions. The reason that's not growing at the same rate is that when we have vacancies or known vacancies, we build that benefits load in at the maximum rather than what the incumbent was enrolled at or the person that just vacated. So sometimes you'll see that case a little bit ahead of the existing one. Purchase services are up 14.41%, that percentage seems massive, the overall dollar amount is about 87 grand. A lot involved in repair and maintenance there, service agreements, some travel increases. So we've got some things we can look at in those areas. Classroom supplies, that's up significantly, that's where we're talking about some of those commodity pieces of it and some of those anticipated costs, I think that's probably outpacing some inflation. But again, it's that conservative approach to, let's put a little bit more in there maybe than what we can need. So again, this is an area that I think we can, we can look to scale back. Capital, major increases in a couple of program areas there, resulting for the most, the biggest percentage of the overall changes. When we started the budget process, we had talked about the differential not being too bad if we stuck with, within what the 21 to 25 capital equipment plan, excuse me, I said improvements, but capital equipment is what I'm referring to. If we'd stuck with what we had planned in, in the adoption of FY21, well, as new requests come in, that number went up significantly. So that's a big, big part of why there's that initial differential. So Benjamin and his folks are gonna need to go through and see if we can move some things around, prioritize those new requests, what's really needed, what can we push in the future years? And that's typically what we do with the capital, capital equipment plan. And what you'll tend to see is a big, heavy load in that last year of it. So a little bit of kicking the can down the road and pushing them out to those late years. But the other side of that coin is really looking to maximize the utilization and not just replace something because it falls on the schedule, but really trying to get it to its end of life when we have to do it. And obviously, this is that cushion. If you plan for something and you push it out to 23 and it's a critical piece, it fails in 22, we're gonna go ahead and go forward and replace that because it has an impact on the students. Dues and fees up just a little bit, and it's accreditation and some registry exams in several of those programs that we're paying for. The next page gets into more of the supporting side of it. Again, you see some similar adjustments there. The big one is in the facilities acquisition and construction, and again, that's those construction projects that we're not doing. I think the next page probably demonstrates this a little bit better before I, actually, it's two pages. Next one's another part of the other supporting services that didn't all fit on one page. These are fairly minor and fairly consistent, one of them is related to the community services. That's an outreach position that we're, that we're filling, that will be funded through the foundation. So it's an additional FTE, but there's also a funding mechanism tied to it as well. The expenditures by the major categories when we, when we go in, and this is the support side of it, not the instruction side, but a similar document. So you see some of the very similar things, so you see the increase in the salaries, oops, worry about that. Of 11.18%, again, that's tied to the salary package that we're gonna propose and ask in the next agenda item. It's also new positions, there was five on the instructional side, three on the support side of it. Benefits, this one trailed, again, same type of thing, additional positions, additional vacancies. When you look at the purchase services, fairly big number in there, but what we're looking at is some postage and advertising costs that we've done more mailing, done more promotional, professional services. This budget includes some HR consulting that we have in there, again, some increase in the legal fees that I used as my example earlier. So that's a mechanism in an area we'll be looking at a little closer. Again, supplies and materials are holding, I won't spend much time in that area. We'll look at trends, see if there's something we can do. On the capital side of it, that 250 that's up there in the other support, that's a placeholder for some FF and E, and what we're really looking to do with that is, this is one of the things we've deferred, is furniture and classroom replacements. But we feel we can factor in some of our one-time money for that, and I think I talked about that one of our earlier board meetings, some of that HERF money we can recover, lost revenue. So as we go to calculate that, program that in FY22, we'll use that as a one-time. So when you look at that differential, I haven't programmed the dollars yet because I don't know if we're gonna, the revenue side of it. So that closes a gap right there if, if we go to 250. So that goes a long ways dividing that off, but we also need to look at our capital improvements project. If we can stay within the dedicated revenue sources that are provided by student fees and state support, then we can take that HERF money and use it exclusively for this, potentially even increase that number a little bit. Don't wanna use the HERF money for ongoing types of things because it holds a length. So we don't wanna, don't necessarily want to kick that can down the road, but if we can backfill some of those one-time types of things, that's what we would be looking to do. On the dues and fees, increases there related to insurances, some accreditation pieces to it related with HLC and some other accreditations. Get into the next page, this is a, again, a different look at it. So you look at those major categories, when I talk about wages, benefits, purchase services, supplies, materials, capital dues and fees. So it's a little bit repetitive, but it lays it out to you a little bit different. So you see consistency between both increases in instruction, but also increases on the support side of it, which makes some degree of sense. But again, I think where we're gonna really look at bringing this into balance is really fine-tuning our revenue estimates, looking at the requested positions, how best to utilize that, and what can we do in those areas? And really looking at that capital equipment and prioritizing that. So that's what's gonna bring that 1.5 million down. The next page looks like a nightmare, which it kind of is, but again, helps us kind of track where we're seeing the staff additions and movements. So you're seeing them on these instruction programs, we talked about the five that were requesting in academics. So NDT, at least as this was proposed, was a new program that I think that's a position we're gonna remove and start that program the following year, there's some things we're running into with the accrediting body, which is gonna push that out. VETTEC, we've already talked about that program expansion for the second year students of that program continues to grow. There's a construction management position in there, we're starting to see more outreach related to that in Harrisburg, in McCrossa, in what we're trying to do with some academies, so we feel that's an important position in there as well. SURGE Tech is a position as well where that program has an incredible demand and we wanna add students in that particular area, so that's another position that we are proposing. There is a specialist support position in there as well that, that in discussions this morning, that's one we think we may pull back and look to try to bring in some student help at a little bit lower cost in doing that. So it's those kind of efficiencies that we're looking at. The occupational programs includes, if you get down to post-secondary special services, you see the minus one there. I wanna point out, we're vacating a position as well that was in the disability services. So we're going to increase some days of one of the student success advisors to pick up that load. He's also a personal counselor, so we have an independent person working, so we'll extend that contract length as well. Both less expensive options than, than replacing the FTE. So we're trying to do those things as we go through. The other ones are just movements and pushing people in different, different cost centers. Next page, on the support side of it, the improvement of instruction services, that's the academic overview, academic support. That's not an increase, that's moving some people out of an instructional role and providing that support as, as department chairs. So we assign part of that as an academic support. The other support service is school administration, that's a housing and retention coordinator that has been 100% paid by housing, a lot of the work they're doing is for the institutes. So we're gonna move half of each one of those individuals back into the post-secondary fund. That's where they're doing the work for and really is an obligation of us and not the Housing Foundation. Business office, we're adding one in there, we'd initially proposed a, our HR person is looking, I'm sure retirement's on the horizon, so we're looking to do some succession planning. So we revisited this and rather than, HR is actually under the administration rather than the business office, but we think we found a resource or a talent that's potentially out there to serve both roles, that helps us in both areas, provides an opportunity for a career path for this person as well, but gives that support in HR, in the payroll side of it specifically, and then also on, on the business office side. And then the community services, I already talked about that, that's the community outreach person that will be extending an offer and is being funded by the foundation. The means of finance, how do we pay for all of it, short of using the 1.5 million in cash? The tuition is set by the State Board of Technical Education, they've approved a $3 increase at their April meeting that was done. The budget that we're proposing that we will bring forward in the final adoption too is requesting a $3 per credit increase across the board, fees. That's consistent with what we used to do years and years ago, we, we always kind of tried to stay on that $6 with the intent of that'll move up to where we get to be an inflationary adjustment as we move forward in those fees. So if the state board would raise it four, we'd go up to, the pandemic and some other things have kind of slowed that from the state level. So we followed their lead, if the state board of tech didn't increase it, we didn't. So we've gone a couple of years with that, so this is the increase that we finally implemented that we haven't had in the last couple of years. But I think there's another page in there, if you look, you'll actually see on the next page that when you look across the overall per-credit fee, we're talking about raising it from 249 to 255 per credit. Some of those are tuition fees, some of them are local fees that are set by U, some of them are state facility fees that go to pay our bonded debt. But the overall baseline for increases is at that 2.41%. So I think we finally reached where that $6 becomes an inflationary adjustment if we were to continue down that path. So it's, it's not where six winds up being a 10% increase, it really starts to fit with that component of it. State aid, that did go up on the per-student allocation, we received the same thing that you did, although our funding formula is a little bit different. Ours is based off of prior year enrollments, not KDM. Ours is based off of prior year enrollments, not KDM. So we do a backwards look to get that. Modeling I've done's been pretty, pretty accurate and with the 2.4 increase, we're expecting a little bit of an increase in our state funding. Other federal resources, why that's down at that point, at this point, FY21, it did include some HERF dollars, we knew that at the time of adoption. That's been removed, but you'll see those come back in as we go to program and finalize the FY22 budget. And when we go to look at lost revenue, what, when we do that, we can look at a year snapshot and that's why it's not quite here yet because we're not quite sure where we're going to end up. So we'll start to know that a little bit more as we work through these next several The next page, when we look at the summary of the student charges, I've already talked about the $3 per credit on tuition and fees, you are also seeing us proposing some program related fees. We've had these in place, but we're proposing some additional ones and also some increases in fees. So this is really very program specific and what we mean by that is, you see the LPN, RN, $50 of credit, we're proposing to bring that up. The $70 per credit, and that's based off of courses that have the prefix of LPN, for the LPN or NURS is our coding designation for RN. So it's very specific to the program. That's in gen, that's going to generate about $450,000 revenue, $450,000 in additional revenue. And by itself, that seems like a lot, but I think when you go back and you, you circle back around and you start looking in these program areas, so you see in the health programs, LPN and then we're doing across the board in the majority of the health programs where we didn't have anything before and going up to $30 per credit. If you go back and remember and looked at what this request is in aggregate, that program across all of them is up $650,000. So what these program fees are trying to do is rather than spread costs of program across the entire campus, we're looking to more target them to those students that are the beneficiaries of the service. And health programs are very equipment intensive, very staff intensive when you look at ratios, when you look at clinical supervision. So we're trying to rather than go across the board, direct that into other areas, but yet maintain that competitive element as well. So we're still, just as an example, on the nursing program fees, we're still quite a bit less than say the university system level. I can't speak to what the other techs are going to do, we just don't know at this point. I did do kind of a high level analysis looking at financial statements that were filed because we can see all of the audit reports that the other techs are doing. And when you look at them, it's not reflective of the FY22 request, it's really looking at FY20 results. Lake area, Mitchell Tech in itself are very close in that calculation method and some of that can come down to interpretation. So while I may, as a revenue category, if I charge a student a late fee, a fee that you folks established, I record that in student fees 1489. Another tech, which I don't know, may classify that as miscellaneous revenue, has another classification. So the, the calculation's not perfect, but when you look at it, we're very similar to those three. Western Dakota is substantially higher in an aggregate approach. So it's kind of anecdotal that we're, we're trying to maintain competitive even with these additional fees that we are, we are proposing to add on. So again, I think the gist of it is we've got some work to do. I am confident that I'll initially say we will find the difference and if we can't, I will find the difference. Then the next factor to it is, do we live within what we, what we determine? And that's where you go back to that historical, we've always come in below our appropriation level, plus we're financially in a little better position because of FY20 results and FY21 results that I, I don't feel we're putting ourselves at risk. It's, it's another year, it gets us through to another year and then we reevaluate again next year. Our approach to budgeting is, has not been incremental, it's been more of a zero-based, where we kind of tear everything apart and try to build it back up and really prioritize what our needs are. So at this time, I'm requesting approval to go forward with the tentative adoption of the budget, with the understanding that we will close the gap on that planned use of cash, existing cash.
Okay.
Questions?
I think first what I'll do is I'm going to open up the hearing for public input. So if there's anybody that would like to give any feedback or ask any questions on the proposed FY22 budget, now would be the time to do that. Okay, seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Do we have any questions or comments from the board regarding the presentation? I would just say, just a couple of things, as you were going through, I'm not exactly sure what page it was on, but talking about some of your, the marketing supplies being a little bit higher, and I think if you look at in the times that we're in with COVID, when we had less face-to-face, that causes things to shift to do things more via mail or
Yep.
paper. And so I think we'll see that come back down to normal as things kind of stabilize in the community. So I think that's an opportunity for the budget to be reflected in, in that as well. And then also, as you mentioned a couple of different times, with growth in our student numbers, which is always our goal, is to try to get more students to enroll and more credits enrolled, we are going to see growth in the expenses as well. And so those definitely make sense when they're correlated in that way. And that's ultimately our goal, is to get more butts in seats and more people learning and more trained people out in the workforce. And so I don't think either of those types of things are, are necessarily surprises, but certainly need to be accounted for and we need to make sure we have the equations equal where yes, we do have the students that we are spending the money for.
And I think, I'd just add to that comment, I, I think that's spot on and I failed to mention it, one of the things that we are seeing, and, and I think we've talked about this before, is with dual credit and other opportunities, we are seeing our average load that a student takes being fewer credits, but more students. So you see the head council, when you talk about the marketing and the direct mailings and all of those touch points, those are not credit-based types of services that you provide, those truly are nose types of things. So as you see those numbers growing, you're going to see those pressures on more mailings, more contacts, more costs associated with that, that don't always, while we get the student there, the credits are seeing a little bit of a decline. Part of that is our population too. I think we're seeing a shift in greater utilization of non-traditional part-time students. So again, it's those kinds of things, but I think you're, you're spot on in that, in that observation.
Yeah, and so I, I feel good about the fact that, I know your teams are still working on each of their kind of individual pieces of that budget to say, how can we look at our expenses and how can we look at our revenues and, and bring those more into line? And so when we come back together in, in July for the final adoption of this, I'm confident that we'll be in a, in a good position for that. Any other comments or? Nope.
I'd point out that the finance and operations area was way down.
Duly noted.
Yeah.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the tenant, to have a tentative adoption of the FY22 proposed budget, knowing that that final budget will come back in July?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That passes. Thank you very much. All right, and then next we have the Southeast Tech salary schedules to be reviewed.
Correct. This is, again, this is flowing from that tentative budgeted option, so that does reflect the proposed increase as, is identified in the executive summary. Laid out a history there that last time we did an across-the-board schedule was in FY19. So we have fallen behind, I think is evidenced by that table below. And that, again, it's not a, it's not a perfect, but really I looked at positions in those different schedules that we have where we have comparable positions. So we have somebody at each of those levels and how did that compare to the, the K-12 system as district employees? And what I mean by the index is, that's just saying that Southeast is at, if it's 100, the district compensation level would be 105. So another way of looking at it, it's 5.54% behind. So we've done other things, so we have not totally abandoned compensation in lieu of balancing budget. I think we spoke to that, we have done some steps. We have done the $1,000 stipend that we did in this fiscal year and put some savings that we realized back into the employees' hands. We've done some targeted increases where we needed to, but this is been an opport, or this presents an opportunity to bring forward a salary package across the board and try to keep us from falling farther behind. So the 1.5 million that, that you just approved includes this adjustment. So at this point, we're looking for approval of the salary schedules so that we can start getting them loaded into our payroll system and be ready to go for that. And again, goes back to the final adoption, we won't see a change in these as are approved.
Anybody have any questions or comments on the updated salary schedules?
Please, forward.
Yeah, I think you're right. We have gone a couple of years without being able to give increases and certainly that doesn't mean we haven't appreciated and, and recognized the hard work that has been done out on campus by all levels of, of staff out there. And so I, I'm happy to say that we can get to this point again, where we can look at salaries and include that as, as part of this. And so that 3%, like you said, is included in that budget that we just talked about. And then similar to what we were able to do for K-12, we were able to do that lump sum to just, you know, I know it's a one-time, but I think a one-time thank you for the work that's been done, yeah, not just this year, especially this year, but also in, in past years as well where we haven't been able to do that, so.
And as our largest budget component, it's always front of mind. It, it has kind of that dual-edged sword to it. It's your largest component, your people component to it are your most important, but because it's the largest component, it, it's also one of the places that you'd want for potential savings.
Good. All right, well, hearing no questions, can I get a motion to approve the FY22 Southeast Tech salary schedules, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, those are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for us today?
Very quickly, I guess, Bob Briggs, Southeast Tech.
Thank you.
Wanted to introduce myself for those that might be listening. I wanted to say a quick thank you to the campus community again because I think May 7th was our graduation and this would be the last or the first meeting opportunity since graduation. And thank you to board member Baker and Chair Mickelson for attending. We had two sessions due to COVID and social distancing at two and five. Really outstanding job once again by our enrollment management and student services area. Kristi Fortham, Registrar, Director of Student Support was organizing the event. Once again, Academics, our graduation committee, really did an outstanding job with two ceremonies this year. And of course Senator Thune spoke at the two o'clock and then Representative Johnson at the 5:00 PM ceremony, both went extremely well. I mentioned at that ceremony, again, just reflecting on the past year, a thank you to, to everyone that really went above and beyond this past year to make a very difficult situation work for our students. And so I wanted to mention that here, we had a state tech board meeting last week in Rapid City and I started my comments with that and I think that's an appropriate way to end this meeting maybe, is a thank you to our very, very hardworking faculty and staff that really came together to help us through and help our students through the challenges, the many challenges that were presented by COVID. So I wanted to thank you all as well for helping us with that and the process in, in terms of the local operation of the campus. So you all contributed to that very significantly also, so thank you for your help.
Yeah, it's, it's funny, I, I continue to see people online posting about how their students in a variety of ages never set foot in a school or in a classroom this year. And I just think we're so lucky here in Sioux Falls to have had our K-12, to have our post, you know, high school out at Southeast, everybody being able to, in some format, maybe it was some sort of a hybrid or it was all in-person or whatever it might be, but people were able to feel comfortable and confident. People respected each other and took care of each other. And it's because of the efforts of all of those people that you were able to celebrate with an in-person graduation after an in-person school year and that our students today in our K-12 are able to celebrate their last day of school after going all year in person. So I just feel like what an amazing feat that is when you think about where other people in the country are at, so it's definitely a gift.
Sounds like a cliche, but it was a campus effort.
Yes.
It really was.
Yeah, the custodians, the teachers, the registrar, people checking in on everyone's wellbeing and whether it's their mental health or their physical health or whatever it might be. So yeah, it takes everybody to work together and make that happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, very grateful.
Two events coming up, so tomorrow we have a ribbon cutting for our new veterinary technician program, the new lab facilities there, and they're impressive. That's at 4:30 PM tomorrow afternoon. If you're available, you're more than welcome to come out for that. And then on June 4th, we are bringing back, other than graduation, I think it was the, probably one of the most fun events I had the opportunity to attend, it was two years ago, but we had our Build Dakota signing ceremony. So we're bringing out all of our Build Dakota scholarship recipients and industry partners, parents, family members, others to help celebrate that day with those students. And so we start early in the morning, 7:30. Again, social distancing, so we have two groups with our healthcare recipients, our students coming in. I think we have about 65 of those students that were awarded full ride healthcare scholarships. And, and so we are going to start at 7:30 with the breakfast, 8 o'clock with the short program. The highlight of the event is the signing ceremony where the students actually sign a Build Dakota scholarship award letter. It's kind of modeled after the National Signing Day for, you know, student athletes and, and the press and all the attention that they garner. And we think, gosh, our students are very hardworking as well and these are incredible full ride scholarships that Build Dakota provides. So we have the healthcare in the morning and then the afternoon, we have our other trades programming. And Dusty Johnson, Representative Johnson will be at that afternoon program speaking to those students, so we appreciate him coming out for that. So you're all welcome again and more than happy to have you out on campus anytime you're available. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Will there be snacks?
Oh gee.
Actually, there's a, a full breakfast and then a full lunch.
Oh great, I'll be in both.
All right, thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.